Good evening, everyone. It's 6:02. We are waiting for another commissioner so that way we can have a quorum. So in the meantime, please be patient and we'll go ahead and bring you back on board once we do have a quorum. Alright, everyone. Thank you for your patience. It's 6:03. We'll go and start tonight's meeting. We do have a quorum. Let's please take a row.
Commissioner Lyde, Commissioner Calandra, Commissioner Diaz, Commissioner Kriner,
President.
Commissioner Shergill, Vice Chair Bray,
Here.
Chair Vang.
Here. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand. I'll go ahead and read the procedures for tonight's meeting. This meeting is being conducted in person and electronically. For each matter considered by the commission, there will first be a staff presentation followed by a presentation for the project applicant. Testimony from supporters of the project would then be taken, followed by testimony from those in opposition. The applicant will have the right to a final rebuttal presentation prior to closing the public hearing. In accordance with Section 13 of Article 2 of the Planning Commission Rules and Regulations governing length of public debate, all public testimony from those in support and opposition of the project will be limited to three minutes per person. The three lights on the podium next to the microphone indicate the amount of time remaining for the speaker. The green light will be turned on when the speaker begins. The yellow light will come on with the soft bell ring when one minute is remaining. The speaker should be completing the testimony by the time the red light comes on with the final bell indicating time has expired. All in-person public testimony must be presented to the commission at the podium. Any testimony that references race, religion, ethnicity, economic status, national origin, or any other classification protected under state or federal law in a derogatory manner should be deemed irrelevant and would not be considered by the commission in making these land use determinations. If you challenge these land use matters in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raising oral or written testimony or before the close of the hearing. Please note that we do have Commissioner Shergill in attendance. Next, we have Agenda Approval. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, Chair Vang. Members of the Planning Commission, I'm Israel Trejo with the Planning and Development Department. There are no changes to the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have any comments, motion from the commission?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion made by Vice Chair Bray, a second by Commissioner Calandra. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Agenda's approved. Under Consent Calendar, we have meeting minutes for July 16th. We have any comments, motion from the commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Vice Chair Bray. We have a second by Commissioner Kriner. All in favor, say yes. Yes. All opposed, say no. Motion's approved. My apologies to you. We switch it up. Aye or yes? Okay. Do we have any reports from the commission?
Area. I just want to thank our Fresno chief, Gasto. Amazing work by the Fresno PD, especially keeping the businesses safe. So, you know, we actually had a meeting with her, especially with several business owners, and Fresno PD has been very supportive, and that is a great step. If we want to get more tax dollars into the city, we have to make sure that businesses feel safe. So, a great job to our wonderful Fresno PD as well. And then I also have a question about when would the West Area Plan will be coming our way. That was one of the questions that was received by a community member. Thank you.
Chair, would you like me to respond?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, good evening. Commissioner, West Area Neighborhood Specific Plan will be coming to the Planning Commission for consideration in September. Yep.
Thank you. So let's move on to new matters. This is item ID 251007, Consideration of Annexation Application Number P2404526.
Okay. Good evening. Chair Vang, Planning Commission. Tonight, staff brings forth consideration of annexation, pre-zone, tract map 6502, and plan development permit and the related environmental finding. My name is Rob Holt, supervising planner for planning and development, and the applicant is De Young Properties. The subject property is located on the north side of McKinley Avenue, between North Temperance Avenue and North to Wolf Avenue. The application includes an annexation, which you can see here is the red outlined area, and the tract map area or property is the blue shaded area. The subject property is surrounded by a large basin to the east, single-family property in neighborhoods to the north and west, rural residential to the south, as well as farming vacant property. The subject property for the subdivision is medium-low density. The area outside of the subdivision included in the annexation is open space and medium-low density as well, and surrounding it to the north and west is medium-low, to the south is medium-density residential, and east is open space for the ponding basin. The subject property will also include a pre-zone as it includes the annexation, which will be zone all three properties consistent with their underlying planned land use. The subject property being developed will be RS4, and the other two properties will be OS. The subject property to be developed is approximately 23.56 acres and incorporates 119 lots, which results in 5.05 dwelling units per acre. The RS4 zone district allows for between three and a half and six dwelling units per acre, so this is consistent with the density. The open space is provided and exceeds the requirement over 11,000 square feet proposed where over 9,000 square feet is required. There is a trail, a planned Class 1 pedestrian bicycle trail along the northern and eastern subdivision boundary. You can kind of see it wraps around sort of the north and east of that subdivision in green there, and will connect to the trail and to the east as well as to the west to the canal. And there is a planned development involved which incorporates a gated community as part of this map, which you can see on the smaller lots to the southeast. It incorporates 28 of the 119 lots, which the planned development incorporates a reduction in minimum lot size, width, and depth, as well as minimum production and minimum front, side, and rear yard setbacks, as well as a maximum increase of lot coverage, and further details of that are in the staff report. Although not required as part of this process, generally there are neighborhood meetings required for annexations for all those residents and owners of properties outside of just the subject property. In this case, the other two properties in the annexation outside of the development are owned by Flood Control, which is a government entity, and Fresno Irrigation District for the canal, which is a government entity. That said, the applicant still held a voluntary neighborhood meeting on July 23rd with the surrounding area to the north and west, but essentially 1,000 feet for property owners. Of that, and that was held at Borst Elementary School across the street, of that, two neighbors attended the meeting, and questions were brought up about the park, trail, a pedestrian bridge, the floor plans of the site, and parcel sizes. Further details are provided in the staff report as a result of that for those questions. Staff did receive opposition letter yesterday afternoon, late afternoon, and there were three points of contention brought forth. Just want to respond to those for you, and those were provided to you on the dais and via an email earlier this morning. The three points of contention, the first was that if approval of this project occurs, then that would continue conversion of farmland. The California Environmental Quality Act requires that we look at three major aspects of farmland as defined in the California's farmland mapping, and that includes farmland of statewide importance, unique farmland, and prime farmland, called the Big Three. And this actually is shown as farmland of local importance. It's not one of the Big Three. Furthermore, the property is currently not being used for farming. It is vacant, and furthermore, and then actually that would be it. So it would be less than significant impact because of that, thus there would be no conversion of farmland for this property. Second would be approval will impact the almond and citrus orchards immediately south of the project across McKinley, and that the use of crop protector pesticides and wind machines for that property may be curtailed due to noise, odor, or pesticide drift potential. That would flood control, or I'm sorry, that would not be considered as part of the environmental. Didn't incorporate noise or odor issues to the south for those, the crop protective pesticides and wind machines. And furthermore, we actually have a condition that requires a right-to-farm covenant, which informs those that are going to buy property here when it does subdivide, that there are right-to-farm operations going on, and you need to be aware of that if you're going to be buying a home here. So that is conditioned. And then the last issue is a clean letter issued by the California Regional Water Quality Control Board, restricts the Flood Control District from flooding the Red Bank Basin, which is the large basin east of the property. And that flooding the basin could not result in the groundwater level rising within 100 feet of the ground surface. The Flood Control District did review this project, did appropriately condition the project. Furthermore, the applicant is providing and proposing two temporary ponding basins that you can find on Exhibit A, I believe Sheet 2, that will incorporate or mitigate flooding in the area, as well as there were properties or subdivisions to the north and west of this that were also subdivided with basins that mitigate this area, so that is not a concern. And then finally, just leaving it here to show you what the tract would look like in current conditions, existing conditions to the west. It does connect the public aspect or public street portion on the western half, does connect to the public subdivision to the west, and then McKinley Avenue will be built out up to the frontage. So with that, staff brings forth recommendation to the City Council, to you Planning Commission, the adoption of the environmental assessment and approval of the annexation, pre-zone, tract map, and plan development permit. That concludes staff's presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions?
I'm just curious, the trail to the north, is that right along the canal?
Yes, it is adjacent to the canal. That is correct.
They're going to landscape it or something?
They will do landscaping with mild landscaping or ground cover with the sidewalk and a four-foot wrought iron fence between the canal and the trail, so that provides safety for children or pedestrians.
Any questions, comments? Thank you. Appreciate it. May we please have the applicant?
Good evening. I'm Brandon De Young with De Young Properties, the applicant here tonight, and I'm very excited to be able to present De Young Blossom View is what we will be calling this community. And this is De Young Properties newest community in the area here, specifically in the city of Fresno. This has been a long time coming. Some of you are aware of this, and we are excited to finally be the developer to be able to bring this new community to fruition here and allow new families to be able to live in this area. As mentioned, first of all, staff has done a wonderful job helping us bring this site and this development to life and make sure that it complies with all the guidelines necessary, and what we ended up with, as you heard, 119 individual, single-family homes. A few things I just wanted to highlight. First of all, as pointed out, there's actually two sections. There's a private development section and a public development section. And the reasoning for this was so that we could offer a variety of not only home site and home square footages, but also price points and affordability. That is so critical these days, especially here in the city of Fresno. We know that's one of the most critical things that we face right now, housing and affordability. right now, housing and affordability. And so instead of just building large 4,000 square foot homes in the whole development, we decided to try to offer multiple types of housing in this, in the same site. To accomplish that, it required the use of a private development to be able to customize the setbacks and other guidelines to achieve that level of density while blending, on the other hand, with more standard public development size homes and lots. On the upper end, we'll be, and we'll also be offering four different series of floor plans. And one, and it'll start on the high end with our Icon Series, which is about a 6,000 square foot home site and homes as large as about 4,000 square feet. And then a medium-sized floor plan series known as a Discover Series, and that is about a 4,000 square foot home site and homes that range from about 1,400 to about 2,300 square feet, kind of a middle range there. And then in the private development, we have Freedom Series and Compass Series. And these will start, home sites will be around 2,000 square feet on the low end, and then up to about 3,000 to 3,500, I believe, on the upper end of square footage of the home sites. And then the homes will range from about, let's say, 1,200 to 2,000 square feet. As mentioned, that section is critical for affordability. It's perfect for those who don't have the need for a large yard, don't want the need, the need and maintenance of a large yard. And then for those that do, we have the options for Discover Series and Icon Series in the public portion. I also wanted to point out the beautiful amenities that we're going to be putting in the trail and the park. And the park will be attached to that trail. So if you saw the map, you can see it's kind of along the trail there. And these aren't within the private section. These are in the public area. So neighbors, not only in our community, in both the private and the public, can utilize these great amenities, but even the neighborhood to the west and even the surrounding area will be able to utilize these amenities. So these were the key things I wanted to point out. One last thing I wanted to add to staff's presentation was during the neighborhood meeting, we were very excited to be able to do that and get great feedback from everyone, and there were really great comments. And we actually, afterwards, one of them was so excited about the project, they actually also submitted a letter of support. So if you didn't catch that, that was nice to see as well. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you for your time and happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. We have any questions or comments?
Thank you for your presentation, sir. So my question is, what is affordability? Do you have the price range? What is the price range for the, for the community?
Yeah, great, great question. So on the upper end, it'll probably be, this, there's still quite a bit of time involved until we can finalize those details, but I can give you a range, a general range. On the upper end, probably 5, 600,000. On the, on the more affordable end, in the private development, we're probably going to, we're hoping to get into the high 300,000s.
That's good. And what are some of the, do they come up with, do they come with some upgrades in the house? What are some of the things that come in the house for the community?
Yeah. If anyone's familiar with DeYoung Properties, you know the level of quality that we build to. We have existing model homes throughout the neighbor, actually a few blocks away. We're already, this is something I should have mentioned earlier, we're already building both Discover Series and Icon Series in the general region here, specifically Discover Series in the city of Fresno already, a few blocks away. We have some beautiful model homes there that anyone can come check out the finishes. And I would say our family, we pride ourselves on building home that's high-quality and including a multitude of high-quality and cutting-edge, not only technology, but beautiful finishes and cabinetry. We've been building homes for over 50 years now, and so the quality that we build to is really important to us. Our name's on the door, and so it's important that we stand behind that quality. So I would say we welcome you to come and check out the model homes, and we can give you more details, the specific features you're interested in. But yes, short answer is yes. Lots of great, high-quality products in our homes.
Well, thank you. And thanks for keeping the price affordable, because, you know, with the inflation keeps on going up, you know, we gotta, you know, there's, there's a limit to it, right?
Absolutely.
So affordability, you know, working, a lot of numbers and all that. So I think that's, that's good for communities.
Interest rates are high still. So yeah, we understand. Everyone's struggling with that. So whatever we can do to help balance that is what the intent was, was with the design.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome.
We're going to go ahead and go out to the public. We have any individuals who would like to speak and support? See, none. We'll go to the public. Any individuals who would like to speak in opposition? None. Bring it back to the commission. Do we have any additional comments, questions for the staff, applicant, or do we have any motion?
I think it's a really nice project, and I'm recommending that the City Council adopt the mitigated negative declaration, the annexation application, the pre-zone application, the vesting map, and the planned development permit application, 2500027.
Perfect. So we have a motion made by Commissioner Galandra. Do we have a second? Okay. We have a second by Commissioner Shergill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion's approved. Thank you. Next up, we're going to have a workshop on new state legislation affecting CEQA. And Rob, thank you too. Rob, appreciate you, man.
This is the one I asked for on CEQA.
There we go. Good evening again, Commissioners Israel Trejo Planning and Development Department. So tonight is a workshop on everyone's favorite subject, CEQA. So going to go over Assembly Bill 130, as well as Senate Bill 131, which were recently adopted by the, by California. It's part of the California budget a month or so ago. The, so the bills are, you know, rather large. Going to narrow this presentation to what we think may see here in the city of Fresno, as well as what may come to the Planning Commission. So Assembly Bill 130 pertains to exemptions, a statutory exemption for housing development projects. The, the bill is kind of twofold. One is, the intent is to streamline residential development while also maintaining environmental quality. So kind of going to explain this with using the checkbox approach. So there's various boxes that you need to check. If you're able to check that box, you move on to the next, and you're able to use the, the statutory exemption. So the first box to check for this, for this exemption is that the site must be 20 acres or less. So if you're at 19 acres, you're fine. If you're at 21 acres, unfortunately, you can't use this, and you have to use some other environmental assessment. So if you're able to check that box, you move on to the next box. And so the intent was for, you know, these, these projects, these housing projects to be in urban areas. So these next three bullet points that you see on the slide is that the site, so you don't have to meet all three of these bullet points, it's just one. The site must be previously developed with an urban use. If it wasn't, then move on to the next one. Maybe you can meet that. At least 75% of the perimeter that adjoins a parcel that is developed with urban uses. So if you have a site that's vacant, that's never been developed, but it has urban uses on three sides, then you're able to check that box. If you, if you're not able to utilize that, there's one last quality that you can use, and that's at least 75% of the uses within a quarter-mile radius of the site are developed with urban uses. So if you're able to check this box, move on to the next box. The next box is that the site must be planned and zoned correctly for the intended residential use. So, you know, a plan amendment or rezone would not be allowed for this statutory exemption. Able to check that box, move on to the next one. The project density must be at least 15 dwelling units to the acre. So we, we, we expect to see this statutory exemption for multi-unit projects. Don't, don't expect to see it for like the map that you just saw. Subdivision maps are typically at five to 12 units to the acre, and this statutory exemption requires 15 units to the acre. So if you're able to, you know, check those four boxes, then the next requirements, these are basically requirements for, you know, being able to use this statutory exemption. Kind of hard for me to see, so I'm going to use my slides here. So tribal consultation is required for utilizing this statutory exemption. When we get a project that meets the other requirements, we send a notice to the Native American Heritage Commission, and they provide us a list of tribes that may be interested in this project. And the tribes have 60 days to provide a comment on this project. If they provide no comment, then we move on. Second requirement is that if a site is located within 500 feet of a freeway, we must implement specific air filtration and air quality requirements. So here in the city of Fresno, you know, it gets hot, obviously. So air filtration is a standard requirement, like AC, AC units. On the coastal communities, maybe not so much. You might not see AC on the, in the coastal communities. So if you're within 500 feet of a freeway, that's fine. You just have to implement air filtration requirements. Last but not least is a Phase 1 environmental assessment. So if you're utilizing the statutory exemption, you would have to perform a Phase 1 environmental assessment. Phase 1 environmental assessors are pretty common in the industry. We even see those for like industrial property or agricultural property that's sold. Title companies typically require a Phase 1 environmental assessment to confirm that there's no soil contamination on the site. So one of the other defining qualities of this statutory exemption is that prevailing wage is not required so long as the property is not over 85 feet in height or is not 100% affordable. So if it's not one of those two, if it's not 100% affordable, or it's not over 85 feet in height, prevailing wage is not required. So the project can be developed at a, at a lower, lower cost than typical. And that's, prevailing wage is a typical impediment that you see for, for projects. So we'd like to move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 131. And that is what's commonly referred to as, as the near miss, the near miss exemption. So it's not, it's not a statutory exemption. Essentially, what it allows for is a, a less, I guess, a less intense environmental assessment, including like an environmental impact report or mitigated negative, negative declaration. So I kind of want to go into the details of that. I think the best way to explain a near miss is, so CEQA allows for various categorical exemptions, you know, within, within state law. And so one of the common exemptions is 15332. And I'm just going to read that real quick, kind of just paraphrase it. But basically, there's five qualities that you must meet in order to utilize a 15332 categorical exemption. Just going to go over those quickly. It'll kind of help me explain the near miss. So in order to utilize a 15332 exemption, there's five qualities that you must meet. One is that the project is consistent with the applicable general plan and zoning. Second is that the proposed development occurs within city limits on a project site of not more than five acres. Third, the project site has no value as habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species. Fourth, approval of the project will not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. Last, the site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. So the reason it's called near miss, so there's five defining qualities that I just read, if, if you just miss one, so what happens is you would prepare an initial study on that one item that you missed. So say, for example, the project potentially has value as habitat for endangered or rare or threatened species. Rather than prepare an initial study, a full-blown initial study studying all the environmental factors that are typically within a, an initial study, there's like 21, there's like transportation, there's air quality, there's agriculture. So rather than study all those, they would study just the area that has a potential to be, have an impact. So, so let's say there was a potential for rare endangered species, the applicant would prepare an initial study that just studied biological resources. And so what does that do? That saves time and money. The, the, rather, you know, an initial study can cost, you know, upwards of $25,000 to prepare maybe even more. An environmental impact report can cost $100,000 more and takes time. And so with this kind of streamlined CEQA, they'll just be studying that one particular area that they did not meet. So this, this section just also explains that the EAR is not required to include any discussion or alternatives or growth-inducing impacts. So it's a streamlined approach. And these last three, kind of outlined earlier, projects which do not meet two or more conditions, you can't utilize it. So it's a near miss. You have to just miss one, and you're able to utilize this exemption. And also, I mentioned at the top of this presentation that, you know, the intent of these bills are to streamline housing development while also protecting the environment. So that, that third bullet point there is, projects, you know, cannot be located on protected lands. So these two bills were, you know, again, they're pretty lengthy. Most of them are related to housing development, but there are also some that were not related to housing, including pantries, daycares, and manufacturing, which Phil's going to, to cover. Thank you.
Any question on this really quick? So these are just signed into law in June, right?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Are these, so any projects right now that's kind of going through the city, are they going to fall under the new guidelines, or how does that work?
Yes, they would fall under these guidelines because these are effective immediately.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Some of the ones that are already in the pipeline, I mean, does it help them at all?
It would, yes. So yeah, we would, we would view the project and make sure that, you know, that they would be able to check all those boxes or do a, you know, streamlined initial study. So yes, a project that's in the pipeline can utilize these bills.
Thank you.
That requires a little bit more work from you guys to kind of go back and look at all these projects then, huh?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Do we have to reconnect? Is it working? All right. Good evening. Philip Segras, Planning and Development Department. So in addition to some of the other statutory exemptions that were, other than the, the near miss exemption under Senate Bill SB, Senate Bill 131, it also provides other statutory exemptions for projects involving daycare centers, nonprofit food banks and food pantries when located in industrial zones, advanced manufacturing projects located in industrial zones, as well as federally qualified health centers, provided they're not located on sites which are designated as natural and protected lands. And so that really includes properties that are designated as maybe prime farmland, high fire hazard areas, hazardous waste sites, et cetera. And so kind of drilling down a little bit deeper into some of those exemptions. So SB 131 provides a streamlined CEQA review for, review of projects for daycare centers that are not located in a residential area, not in a neighborhood or a residential zone district. And it primarily applies to any child daycare center or facility other than a family daycare home. So there are a number of daycare facilities that are located in existing, in single-family residences. This doesn't apply to that. This would be more traditional daycare center that you might find in maybe an office zone district or somewhere else outside of a residential area. And it includes facilities for infant centers, preschools, extended daycare facilities, and school-aged childcare centers. SB 131 also allows streamlined review of projects for, involving health centers that are less than 50,000 square feet that are federally qualified. And so that really means that they're a community-based health center that receives federal funding, where they provide essential primary care services to underserved populations. And it also provides streamlined review, CEQA review of nonprofit food banks and food pantries. And the criteria is that they are a registered nonprofit business, a 501(c)(3), where they would solicit and store, as well as distribute food to a service area around their, their, their business. And in addition, the site that they're located in has to be zoned exclusively for industrial uses, and it can't be located in an area that it would allow residential And it can't be located in an area that would allow residential-type uses there. So potentially in our heavy industrial zone districts where they would be distributing food elsewhere, trips, trucks coming in and out, distributing food, rather than potentially preparing an initial study for that use, it could qualify under this exemption. And, oops, I think I skipped one. Sorry. And last but not least, there is an exemption for advanced manufacturing. It would provide streamlined review for projects involving advanced manufacturing facilities, provided they're located on a site zoned exclusively for industrial uses. And to provide, it's kind of hard to capture it all here, but I do have a definition. An advanced manufacturing means manufacturing processes that improve existing or create entirely new materials, products, and processes through the use of science, engineering, or information technologies, high-precision tools and methods, high-performance workforce, and innovative business and organizational models utilizing any of the following technology areas. So that would be, include microelectronics and nanoelectronics such as semiconductors, advanced materials, integrated computational materials and engineering, nanotechnology, additive manufacturing, and industrial biotechnology. And so if we're here in the city of Fresno, again, advanced manufacturing facility would have to be located in an area zoned exclusively for industrial uses. And so if we had a project, you know, again, it's more intense, I wouldn't say intense, but a project that would typically probably require an initial study, maybe an EIR, don't know, depending on the project, it could qualify under this exemption and have a streamlined And that concludes my part of the presentation.
Awesome. Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Sort of related. So the South Central Plan where they're proposing to zone that to office and residential, if that happened, then they couldn't do the advanced manufacturing. They wouldn't be able to do the CEQA, this new CEQA thing on advanced manufacturing in that area because it would be rezoned.
Are you referring to the South Central specific plan area where there, I mean, it would include rezoning certain properties, but I think a number of those, majority of those properties would probably remain and continue to be zoned for industrial-type uses. Some might be changed to office uses within that plan. If that's the case, then those properties likely would not be able to utilize this exemption. But any other properties that are either currently planned or zoned for industrial, exclusively industrial, they could use this exemption.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to thank you for the presentation because I was really curious to see what kind of an impact this was going to have on, you know, mostly, you know, residential.
Yeah. There are a lot on there, sorry to add.
What impact do you think it's going to have?
Can you say that again?
What impact do you think it's going to have?
I
None. I just, so there are very few, I think there are potentially some applications within the city limits of parcels that are larger than five acres. On the residential side will probably have a greater impact than these others that Philip was speaking of. But I am not overly optimistic that this is really going to provide the streamlining and the magic moment that has been expressed in various media outlets of how this is this grand overhaul. Really, it takes our infill exemption from five to 20 acres. And that, in my opinion, that's probably the best that it does. This near miss is going to be really complex to try and figure out. And even our state experts in CEQA have expressed concerns about that. There are still exceptions to the exemptions. So there are nine of those that we have to follow additionally. So it's very, it's very complex. It was very unusual because it was a rider bill to, or a trailer bill to the budget. So it did not follow the standard approval process of a bill. And it is our understanding that there will be a lot of cleanup language that will be introduced this year. And maybe next year we'll have a better idea. Certainly, there are potential parcels within the city for the residential piece that it could be beneficial. From a ministerial perspective, it could create a benefit in the sense that we would have less CEQA to do, but our process is less onerous than other cities. So requiring an initial study and a Phase 1 environmental and consultation with the tribes, you've almost thrown out the whole benefit of doing ministerial. You want it, you asked for an opinion. There is mine. It is not the opinion necessarily of the management. Let me just say, like, that's my opinion based on our interpretation. I don't know that we all really understand it quite well, but I don't know if Israel and Phil have a different feeling on it. Right now, I just, I don't think it's going to be the panacea that we're imagining.
Yeah. I mean, it's really early to tell. Remain hopeful. We'll explore opportunities to use it when we can and definitely we'll try that, but kind of on the fence still.
Yeah, I think with everything, it's almost like the implementation process is going to be the most difficult thing, right? So, awesome. Phil, Israel, thank you so much. Appreciate you guys taking time. We have any unscheduled oral communications? Any, sorry, any reports from the secretary?
Chair, just a reminder, if you haven't already started reading the West Area Neighborhood Specific Plan that is on the city's website, please do so. We do, we did hope to bring it later this month. We had a little bit of a delay, so it will be heard in September by this commission and then on to city council and hopefully adopted by the end of September.
Yeah, well, I just appreciate the fact that you guys respect our summers. That's it. So any unscheduled oral communications? I see none. At 6:45, meet as adjourned. Everyone, have a wonderful evening.